Ms. Scott, would you please read the statement to bring us back into open session?
Yes, Chair Swiger, I move that the record shows that the only items discussed in the closed meeting were those specifically cited in the motion to convene into the closed meeting and those lawfully exempted from statutory meeting requirements.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Lamonia, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Dr. Smith?
Motion carries with all board members present voting yes.
I'll entertain a motion for approval in reference to the personnel matter discussed in closed session.
Chair Swiger, I would like to make a motion in reference to the personnel matter discussed in closed session pursuant to Virginia Administration Regulation 8, Virginia Code 20-23-720, and I move to support the superintendent's recommendation.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Scott, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Dr. Smith?
Motion carries with a vote of seven to one with Board Member McCormick. I apologize. Motion carries with a vote of six to two, Board Members Dean and McCormick voting in opposition.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We will now move on to the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. At this time, I'd like to call upon Reverend Tracy Gregory, Emmanuel Baptist Church, who will give the opening invocation. Afterward, I'll ask Board Member Poole to lead us in the pledge. Please stand as you are able.
It's my honor to be with you tonight. Let's pray together. Father, as we prepare to begin this new school year, we gather as a community to seek your protection and guidance. We pray for our superintendent, our school board, and school administration. Give them wisdom as they navigate the complicated challenges and issues they face. Guide their choices with knowledge and understanding and sound judgment. We pray for our dedicated teachers and school staff. We ask that you will fill them with compassion and perspective and grace as they invest their lives in the lives of our children. Give them courage and creativity and discernment, and remind them their work is not in vain. And we pray that each classroom will be a place where love and joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control will flourish. Father, we also pray for the families of our students. Be with the moms and dads and guardians, and calm their fears and anxieties. Give them your peace and joy as they watch their students navigate this new school year. We pray that you will bless the families in our community. And Father, last but not least, we pray that you will bless our students. Give them courage as they begin this new school year. Surround them with supportive and encouraging friends. Bless their hard work and surprise them with unexpected moments of joy. And we pray that you raise this next generation of leaders up, that they may reflect your love to all those around him. Now, Father, we are completely dependent upon you today and every day. Help each of us to raise, rise to the great responsibility of being faithful stewards of our children. Now, we pray that you bless us and keep us, make your face to shine upon us and be gracious to us, and turn your face toward us and give us peace. In your name we pray. Amen.
There being no awards and recognitions tonight, we will move on to the hearing of citizens. During their allotted time, speakers should observe our rules of decorum and know that expressions of concerns and criticism on matters of school policy and operations is welcome. While the speaker's own comments are welcome, they may not play prerecorded messages. Dr. Smith, are there any citizens who have requested time to speak this evening?
Yes, Chair Swiger, we have three citizens requesting to speak.
I want to thank those speakers who have signed up to address the board this evening. There are two ways that citizens can request time to speak at our meetings. You can call a clerk's office before 12 noon the day of the meeting, or sign up to speak prior to the start of the meeting. All in-person requests to speak must be submitted to the deputy clerk five minutes prior to the published meeting's start time. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. Once your allotted time is over, we ask that you promptly exit the podium. You may choose to sit in the boardroom if seats are available, but standing or sitting on the floor will not be permitted, and you may not block the exit doors. We would also like to ask that you refrain from any behavior that disrupts the meeting, including the use of profanity, applause, cheering, or jeering. Dr. Smith, please call the first speaker.
Yes, Speaker Number One, I'd like to invite you to the podium. Ask you to state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Vic Nichols, Chesapeake. Virginia Beach School Board passed a resolution, basically, that made sure that outside organizations with a clear partisan agenda but are masquerading as nonpartisan will not be permitted to do voter registrations and take student data from Virginia Beach. I would like to make sure that Chesapeake has that same policy for our kids. Thank you.
Speaker Number Two, it's your turn at the podium. If you'll please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Hello, my name is Dr. David Tree of Chesapeake. First, I want to thank you for hearing me out, and I appreciate it. You may recall that I was here about a year ago concerning my son, and unfortunately, I am here again considering the issue has not been resolved. My son, I believe to be gifted, is not getting the attention that I believe he needs to be getting to receive. By the way, he's five, should be going into kindergarten. I would like to see him tested and examined for potential to perhaps skip a grade or some other considerations. But I wish to bring two issues to your attention that is preventing me from being able to do this. Issue one is that I can't get anybody to respond. I have made calls to both the school and to the administration several times. I have yet to receive, I take it back, I have received one phone call back. But it takes weeks and months to get anybody to call me back, and I am still waiting from anybody other than Ms. Otis, I believe is her name, from the elementary school to give me a call back. So that's the first issue. The second issue, however, is that all of my concerns and issues were dismissed immediately. During the phone call, I had told the principal that I believe that my son is gifted. She told me, well, you know, we have to test him. I had this issue a year ago. I actually have test results to help with my case. I was then informed that that wasn't good enough, we were going to go to a different system. I said, fine, I will pay for it, tell me what I need to do. I was then told that the system was not up and running, couldn't do it. And even if it was up and running, I was told that I would not be considered, or my son would not be considered, for any consideration until at least two more years. As you can tell, that upset me greatly. I would like to quote from your gifted program. You have a gifted placement policy. This is page 29 I wish to quote from. Forgive me, I lost my place there. All right, here we go. "The Chesapeake School System Division is committed to providing all students in grades K through 12 with a quality education designed to meet individual needs. Students with exceptional abilities require differential instructions in order to accommodate their unique capabilities and to foster their full potential. Without differentiation, superior potential may remain undeveloped. So I wish to express to this board that I am frustrated that I can't get anybody to respond to me, except for, again, the principal that one time, and I am frustrated that even when I was able to talk to her, that I was basically told, too bad, sit down for two years." So unfortunately, unless this can get resolved, I will have to withdraw my son from the school system, and I'd rather not have to do that. Thank you.
Speaker Number Three, it's your turn at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
My name is Reverend Gregory Webb, and I won't be before you too long. Just be, I just need about 30 minutes. Now, since we're all together now. The reason why I'm here is because I've been running all day long today trying to get my grandson in schools. He attended one school last year, but his mother moved this year, a couple of months ago, and he has to go to another school. But therefore, he, he would not be, nobody would be home with him. So we, as God-caring grandparent people, we would like for him to stay at the school that he is staying at because there would be somebody at our house that would take him, you know, take him to school and bring him back from school at my house. But his mother worked during the day, and so therefore, there would not be anybody home with him. So we don't want to get him in any kind of trouble or anything, and we don't want him to get in any trouble. So we would like to come to you all to let him, to let us know that he can stay at the same school. So is there any way that you can get back with us, you know, to let us know this thing? That's all I have to say. Okay, now I was at the administration office today, and they told me that, you know, he had to go to that school. But there, he is nothing but 12 years old, you know, he can't do it for himself. So therefore, take consideration of the problem, the situation that we are having. Thank you.
This concludes our speakers for this evening.
Our practice is to receive information, however, we do not usually engage in dialogue, and that is our intent tonight. If appropriate and not already provided, someone from the superintendent's staff will evaluate your concern and provide a response. We will now move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approval. Move by Ms. Scott, is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Walker. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Dr. Smith?
Motion carries with all board members present voting yes.
Okay, now we are moving on to the information agenda. The first item is the readiness report. Over to you, Dr. Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In just a few days, the new school year will begin, and we have been preparing all summer for the return of our students. This summer, the world watched as the Olympic Games unfolded. I hope many of you had the chance to see our former students, Grant Holloway and Quincy Wilson, proudly represent our community on the world stage and bring home the gold. But as you all know, such victories don't happen overnight. Behind every gold medal is a team of people committed to training, planning, and preparation. Olympians spend years training, fine tuning their skills to ensure they're at their best when the moment arrives. In much the same way, in a much lesser way, but very important, we'll say, our team has been diligently preparing for the start of this school year. Just like our Olympians, our readiness has been meticulously planned and executed to ensure that our students have everything they need to succeed. Let's take a look at some of the ways we prepared for the upcoming school year. Our expert educators have diligently revised the curriculum to maintain a strong focus on the fundamental principles that foster a well-rounded education, and we have taken significant steps to ensure that it aligns seamlessly with the Virginia Standards of Learning and the Virginia Literacy Act. Our curriculum includes updated curriculum unit plans in Canvas and assessments in Mastery Connect. This summer, the Department of Teaching and Learning even led principals and assistant principals through hands-on experiences and discuss ways to support teachers using valuable curriculum resources. We've been diving into our data, analyzing test scores, student performance metrics, and feedback to refine our instructional strategies. Over the summer, our team focused on understanding where our instructional leaders and students excel and where they face challenges. This data-driven insight allows us to tailor our instruction, ensuring that every student receives the support they need to succeed. Our journey of continuous growth and learning never stops, and our teachers and administrators have been engaging in enriching professional development opportunities. As you can see, we have offered our administrators and teachers many different options to hone or learn a new skill. These professional development opportunities allow our educators to be informed about best practices and innovative strategies when planning lessons. At any great team, whether it's sports or education, success depends on having the right people in the right positions. This summer, our hiring efforts have been extensive. This involved increased presence at job fairs as well as innovative recruitment strategies. And I have to tell you, we had a walk-up Wednesday last week, and I want to say we had almost 80 candidates walk up to learn about Chesapeake Public Schools and apply for a job. And we made them all bus drivers. I'm teasing. You know I'm teasing, but anyway. But hiring is only one part of the equation. Retention is equally important. We've implemented new initiatives to enhance the salaries of current staff, recognizing their hard work, and providing opportunities for growth and development. From professional development programs to wellness initiatives, we're committed to creating an environment where our valued employees feel appreciated and motivated to stay. While we still have positions to fill, we are confident that we'll have a plan in place before the start of school. We are still hiring teachers, school nutrition workers, and bus drivers, so if you are interested, please, please, apply. We've also made significant enhancements to our technology and infrastructure. And again, all of this has been happening over the summer. All administrators have been trained on Mastery Connect, a powerful tool that helps teachers track student progress and personalized learning. Mastery Connect will be used division-wide to support data-driven instruction and improve student outcomes. A new content filter and classroom management platform has been implemented to ensure that students have a safe and productive online learning environment. The network architecture has been upgraded to provide direct Internet connections at all high schools, which will increase Internet speed and performance, which we're all happy to hear. The data center is being relocated and upgraded to utilize the power of converged architecture. And camera and emergency radio projects are being expanded to improve safety and security in our schools, including signal boosting antennas placed in all 47 sites to ensure emergency radio connectivity from the office in case of an emergency. Over the past months, we've undertaken significant capital improvements to ensure that our schools are safe and modernized. These improvements include roof and partial HVAC replacements at several of our schools and furniture replacements and upgrades. Repaving is completed at Grapebridge High School and has begun at George Washington Carver Intermediate, Norfolk Highlands Primary, and Greenbrier Intermediate. Students will enjoy their new playgrounds, and construction on the new Crestwood Elementary Building is underway. This was all accomplished while completing construction and moving into our new central office building, which you are enjoying this evening. We've implemented a series of enhanced safety and security measures across our schools. This includes increasing law enforcement personnel, providing stop-the-bleed training for all staff, upgrading our security systems, and expanding the elementary school fire safety program. These initiatives are designed to create a safe and secure environment where students and teachers can focus on instruction. Our goal is to provide peace of mind, knowing that we are prepared to handle any situation that may arise. We have been continuing our work on the ID Badge Program, and will extend the program to secondary schools, hopefully by the second semester. Our bus routes are prepared to be as efficient as possible, and our experienced maintenance team has conducted thorough standard preventative maintenance on our buses. We have also initiated our transition to the Joint Fleet and Maintenance Facility. We have continued with our focus on building and reinforcing our community connections. Our Get on the Bus event hosted at the Chesapeake Convention Center had the greatest attendance yet. We got to see so many smiling faces while getting our students ready to kick off the new school year with everything they need to succeed. And coming up, Love Like Adam, which is a partnership with Chesapeake Integrated Behavior Health, will provide information and spread awareness about how to stay safe on college campuses. The Hispanic Resource Fair will highlight the family welcome and support center and resources available to our Spanish-speaking families. Parent Cafes will be hosted in English and Spanish throughout the school year in partnership with CHIP, the Children's Health Investment Program. Lastly, we will host SIBSHOPS, a program for siblings of students with disabilities to help them connect with peers who share similar experiences to promote a sense of belonging. We've enhanced our communication strategies to ensure that our families are informed and engaged. We've recently launched our Let's Talk Chat Bot to provide immediate answers to your questions. We have translated our student handbook to provide a version in Spanish. If you haven't already downloaded the app, we encourage you to download our mobile app for school and district notifications, and look out for us on Instagram because we will be on there soon. As I bring this presentation to a close, I want to reflect on the culmination of our summer preparations, which, much like the closing ceremony of the Olympics, ended with a star-studded event, our Empower Conference. We were honored to welcome back two of Chesapeake's own, Jay Pharoah and Adrian Warren, who have gone on to achieve incredible success, both nationally and internationally. Their presence was a powerful reminder of what our students can accomplish with the right support, guidance, and dedication. Additionally, we were privileged to have Catlin Tucker, a renowned educator, join us to inspire and equip our staff with innovative strategies for the year ahead. Which brings me to a few important reminders for our parents. To ensure a smooth transition to the start of the school year, we need your help. Ensuring accurate enrollment records is crucial for a smooth start to the school year. We encourage all parents and guardians to take a moment to verify their child's enrollment information online. The deadline for this is September 30th, so please do not delay. Please ensure your child meets immunization requirements. We have offered several vaccination clinics this summer, and the last one will take place on August 30th at Oscar Smith Middle. Additionally, the Chesapeake Health Department offers school-required vaccinations free of charge. We ask that you review the student handbook with your student. In particular, we ask that you review what your student should and should not bring to school with them each day. Most importantly, if you qualify, please apply for free and reduced lunch. We encourage eligible families to complete the application online. Thank you so much for your attention to our important back-to-school updates and announcements. Ready or not, here they come on September 3rd. I hope you are just as excited as I am to be back. You can print back-to-school signs for those first-day photos on our website, and I'd love it if you would share those smiles with us on social media using the hashtag #FirstDayCPSVA. I can't wait to see our students on September 3rd. Madam Chair, members of the board, this completes our readiness update.
Thank you, Dr. Cotton. There being no items on the action agenda this evening, we will now move right back to Dr. Cotton for his superintendent's report.
Wow, that's quick. I do have a couple announcements that I want to point out before I go into my spotlight. First of all, board members, as we've discussed, we are excited to have you join members of my cabinet in visiting schools during the first couple of weeks of school. We have decided on September 12th will be the day that the majority of the board will be available to visit schools. But don't worry, cabinet members will schedule with individual board members on a day that's convenient for you. We do look forward to visiting schools as we get the school year started, so we look forward to you all being a part of that. And also, as a reminder to our families, we are experiencing bus driver shortages still, and we are asking for continued assistance from parents in transporting their children to and from school whenever possible. And of course, we are doing everything we can to make those bus stops and everything as efficient as possible in getting those posted, as I look at Dr. Miller, right? All right, with that, I'll move on to our spotlight for this month. We had the summer off, but now we have some highlights that I would love to share with the board and the community this evening. It's great to be back tonight with my first superintendent's spotlight for the 2425 school year. We are just a few short days away from the first day of school, and our students, teachers, and administrators, and community partners have been very busy this summer preparing for a great start. Part of that great start is ensuring that all of our students are enrolled and ready for their first day. To help families prepare, we hosted our annual Get on the Bus event on August 1st at the Chesapeake Conference Center in conjunction with the Office of Family and Community Engagement, the Chesapeake Department of Health, Chesapeake Regional Healthcare, and many other community organizations. The goal of the event was to help families prepare for back-to-school with enrollment assistance, free school supplies, immunizations, and more. Thank you to everyone, including our student volunteers, who are on hand to provide support for our families. It's clear everyone is getting ready and excited for the first day of school. Another summer project I am proud to highlight this evening is the tremendous success of the third year of our Grow Our Own Summer Internship Program. This summer, juniors and seniors from across the district earn 40 hours of paid internship experience working across our district in information technology, communications, school nutrition, transportation, teaching and learning, and many more areas. Our Grow Our Own interns did outstanding work and played a huge part in making the program a success. A couple of weeks ago, over 50 students received their diplomas and walked across the stage at our summer graduation held at Deep Creek High School. I am extremely proud of our summer graduates for crossing the finish line of their high school academic journey, and I cannot wait to see what is next for them as their time in Chesapeake Public Schools comes to an end. Special thanks to Deep Creek High School for hosting our summer graduation ceremony, and Dr. Hunley Stukes for being a keynote speaker at that ceremony. On August 7th and 8th, all of our district and school-based administrators and many of our teacher leaders were also gearing up for a great, gearing up for a great year at our two-day Empower 2024 Leadership Conference. The event hosted at Any River High School included remarks from well-known Chesapeake Public Schools alumni, Tony Award-winning actress Adrian Warren and comedian Jay Pharoah. In addition, the conference featured fun team-building events, useful breakout sessions, keynote speaker Catlin Tucker, and many more useful and energetic sessions. We ended the second day on an even more exciting note when we gathered together as a district to watch Grant Holloway, a 2016 Grassfield High School alum, win gold in the Paris Olympics. Check it out. Check it out.
It's a good thing you can't hear it, because they were very, they were very loud, you would need earplugs, but we were very excited to celebrate Grant Holloway's wins, so we'll, we'll move on from there. Apparently, we're having audio difficulties. We love seeing our students succeed, and that's one of the reasons that Any River High School graduate Jay Pharo returned home for our general conference. He held a workshop with 15 Chesapeake students to teach them acting and improvisation. The Pharo 15 collectively wrote and performed a brief play despite having less than 24 hours to produce the entire performance. It was awesome to see the students displaying their talents onstage in front of all the general conference attendees. Thank you to Jay for his commitment to serving the community and for the Pharo Family Foundation for giving back to our students right here in Chesapeake. We also honored two outstanding administrators at the conference for their excellence in educational leadership. Principal Felicia Frazier from Trecle Elementary and Principal Dee Williams from Oscar Smith Middle School were selected as the inaugural elementary and secondary recipients of the Chesapeake Public Schools Excellence in Leadership Award. The Excellence in Educational Leadership Award honors a leader whose impact is immeasurable. Both Principal Frazier and Principal Williams have had immense impacts on their schools and are extremely deserving of this recognition. Congratulations to both of our award winners, and they were surprised. During the summer, 23 Chesapeake students joined others from Portsmouth and Northampton for the EVMS Summer Health Sciences Academy. The academy was a two-week exploratory program at Eastern Virginia Medical School that offered our students the opportunity to learn about different health services, careers, and occupations. Students received hands-on experience through pathology, anatomy, physiology, lab work, and suturing. Additionally, students traveled to Old Dominion University to practice speech therapy, dental hygiene, nursing, and more. This was our second year participating in the program, and I think it is safe to say that our students enjoyed their experience and learned a lot. Tonight, I'm also proud to recognize 10 schools whose PTAs were named Schools of Excellence by the National Parent Teacher Association. Out of 319 schools recognized nationally, 10 reside right here in Chesapeake. We are so proud of our PTAs that received national recognition for their work, but we're even more grateful for the effort you put in to serve our schools and our communities. Congratulations to all the parents, teachers, and staff who made this achievement possible. Finally, just last week, we welcomed 282 new educators to our Chesapeake Public Schools' family for the 2425 school year. Any River High School hosted our new educator orientation last week, where our new educators got to kick off their time with the district by meeting new colleagues and getting energized for the school year. Once again, thank you to Any River High School and Principal Dunbar for hosting and allowing us the space to make this event happen. In addition, thank you to Michael Bonner for being our keynote speaker. Once again, we keep trying to hire him, and spending his time inspiring our new educators. I truly believe that we had a great, we have a great incoming group, and I